So we'll go ahead and get started, and I just wanted to let everyone know, we are, we have a conference phone now in the boardroom. So you will hear Jacob is located in the boardroom, Bruce is located in the boardroom, and I am. Um, so if you have your screen set so that it picks up who's ever talking, becomes a big box on your screen. The speaker's gonna pick the three of us up. So it's probably just gonna be that 320 box that's gonna get large. Otherwise, um, we should be good. Okay? So we will go ahead and get started, and we're gonna start with communication items. Uh, Mary, you wanna go first?
I'd love to go first, but I do default to David next meeting. He can go first. Just kidding. Hi, everybody. Good to see you all. Um, we'll make this pretty brief. We did the elementary progress reports and our staff reached out to all the families and had a virtual conference with them either by phone or on a Google Meet, and there was really good feedback about that. It was a really positive way to reconnect with families and kiddos for the end of the year. Um, we did a fifth grade graduation video. Kudos to our fifth grade team for putting that together. We also gave them graduation bags with some bulldog items in, so it was a nice way to recognize those kids as well. Um, and then on the last day of school, we had our backward parade. So the staff and our SRO officers Jerome and Tony, the transportation and busing department came by and sat in the front yard. We had music. It was a beautiful day, a wonderful celebration to the end of our year. Um, and that leads me to the distance learning. Thank you. So thanks to all of you for your support, for being out there in public and speaking on our behalf and for taking comments and concerns and addressing them with us. We couldn't have done any of this without you, without our staff who were dedicated and worked hard and always kept the kids' best interests at heart. To Matt and David for your guys' support, the whole admin team. You know, everyone just really came together, and that's a big shout out. And then like our sign said, um, at the parade, a big thanks to our parents and grandparents in our community for supporting us these really uncharted times. Moving forward to 2020 and 2021, we're looking at some family groups. We've got some fun things coming forward with our SEL, our social emotional learning. And we're doing some changes to our communication labs. So we've got one-to-one devices for all of our kids, K to five. It's time to step that up and get them ready for middle school and the rest of their future. Any questions or concerns?
All right, thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
David, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now, now I can, I can hear you.
Okay. Um, I'm having some issues with my camera, so I can't see any of you right now, but. Um, so again, I wanna echo, uh, Mary's sentiment on lots of thank yous. Uh, graduation, I thought, went, um, went really well under the circumstances and I think offered us some closure. Um, thank you to, uh, board members who could, uh, make it and, and be part of that and, uh, administration and, uh, department, police, teachers, everybody who, who had a small, even a small part in that. Um, we did share pictures, uh, with families, with families today. There was, uh, I think like 532 pictures that, uh, between Mike and Ellery. Um, we are, uh, working on the scheduling. I pretty much have, uh, the teachers, um, scheduled into what they are teaching, and now we'll start, uh, putting those schedules together by the end of the week and, uh, work on that into next week. Uh, sixth grade, uh, students who are gonna be here in the fall didn't get a chance to come to our, um, orientation or come over and have lunch or anything like that this spring. So we did send a letter to all of those, uh, students and families that went out yesterday, um, just to let them know that we haven't forgotten about them. And over the summer, we will, um, work on scheduling some dates where groups of students can come in and take a tour and pick up their schedule and, and practice with their locker and things like that. So that will be, uh, probably sometime in, in July when we start to do that. Uh, first day of school for sixth graders is gonna look a lot different next year. We are planning a day full of activities, um, and orientation and, um, just a lot of team building. And so we, we have a group of, uh, staff that are gonna be working on getting that organized, and, uh, we'll have more information on that shortly. Um, anything else for, any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, David. Uh, let's see, committee head director, Matt, you ready?
Yep. All right. Uh, some good news to report. Uh, we, I get, got, uh, clearance to open the fitness center starting tomorrow. So we're gonna open back up, uh, 12 o'clock tomorrow. So we're excited about that. Uh, we've got quite the disinfecting routine and signage and, um, yeah, so we're, we're excited to, to be allowed for that service again. Summer camp pause started on Monday. We have over, we have 77 students enrolled, a fantastic group of staff and students in the program this summer. Uh, some things that'll look different as it's, uh, we're required to have much smaller ratios, staff to student ratios, and we have no, we aren't allowed to do any field trips right now due to social distancing and, and busing. But, uh, we're gonna make the best of it. We've got lots of fun things planned for the kids. Uh, our live stream program continues to grow. Uh, we'll be streaming our 10th live episode of the Talk of Painesville this Thursday. Uh, Matt's gonna be on that. Uh, we actually have had over 20,000 views of our productions this, uh, season, so starting from last fall to now. Uh, unfortunately, when we did graduation, our biggest event, uh, we did lose, uh, internet connectivity during the, during the, uh, stream. Um, however, we were able to get out a, a polished or edited product the next day, so we have over a thousand views on that. Uh, summer rec right now is still in flux due to the COVID-19 and social distancing requirements. It makes it pretty hard for us to offer, uh, regular programming, but we continue to evaluate that and are looking for new, uh, options and ways to work around that. So, any questions for me?
No, I've got a question, Matt. It's Rick. Um,
Yep.
As far as the reopening of facilities for activities, is there a kind of a plan for the summer? Or I noticed there are some activities taking place, some baseball practices started up. Um, what about indoor facilities or do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so Max and I are working, he's working with the head coaches right now, and right now the, they're still to that one coach to nine students for indoors. Um, outdoors is 25, pods of 25. So our priority right now is to get, um, our older kids and our varsity, you know, the high school level to be able to get practices and get some things in. Uh, we are gonna be losing the high school gym for a chunk of time this summer due to the sprinkler system, the painting, and then the floor resurfacing. So we're kinda seeing how all this is gonna shake out and kind of building from there. So I don't, that kinda answers your question. We're just still kind of, it, things just change so often here on what we can and can't do and availability. So we were originally thinking that most things weren't gonna be able to start till after July 4th anyhow, so we are kinda still planning that. I know Max will probably talk about they started their, um, strength and conditioning and agility, um, on Monday. So, um, but it's just kind of, we're trying to get the high school, um, level kids first, and then we're gonna kind of build from there. But as far as outdoor, right now, we have no games are allowed. So in our entire summer rec programs are based on intermixing, uh, they don't even want any they technically say no, no parents can be there. They're supposed to drop the kids off and no spectators. So that totally puts a damper on our entire model of our youth programs. It's, you know, you've coached, it's, you know, 100 kids out on a couple fields and all the parents around. So that for us has really affected it. Um, so it's, it's still waiting to see.
Okay. I just wanted, cause I'd seen some practices taking place. I didn't know who it was or what, what the policy was. So just curious. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, let's go to Max.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Perfect. Like Matt said, uh, we started on Monday with our, uh, partnership with Day One Strength and Conditioning or Day One Sports Performance, uh, who comes in and offers strength and conditioning classes for, uh, student athletes grade seven through 12 going into next year. And that started on Monday, and yeah, things are changing all the time. In fact, on Thursday last week, I think it was, I moved a whole bunch of equipment from the weight room because our weight room wasn't open to create two stations in the middle school gym with a divider in, so we could have uh, two groups of nine as well as some outside. Um, and then on Friday, Governor Walz opened the fitness center back up effective Wednesday, so all that stuff is now, uh, moved back. Um, Sam Orline works here, um, helped get that back today. So, uh, we're just adjusting with that and doing that. So we have pods that are coming in and, um, following the MDH and CDC guidelines for, or guidance for, um, safety, and we did start that strength and conditioning program on Monday. Uh, in addition, we will have to, uh, transition and get some space made over at the elementary school and, uh, it's kinda, I guess it's called the snake pit or underneath the, uh, bleachers that are permanent in there, so, uh, we can store some junior high football equipment this fall. Uh, for, uh, we're gonna have to have our seventh and eighth graders play over in the middle or the elementary school out in the back. Um, a grass area there, create a field because of the construction, and we won't have a space for them this year. So uh, that's something that we'll have to get done, uh, coming up here in July. Otherwise, it's, uh, pretty busy spinning our wheels, trying to make plans that change in two or three days. I do, I have been meeting with all our coaches. Our coaches are working on putting together, um, plans. It's a little bit different for each sport. When you talk about social distancing, that kind of eliminates completely a sport like wrestling, um, where you just really are gonna be able to be in that kind of physical contact. And so, um, yeah, we're working on that. It's different for people that are outside than are inside, and, uh, we expect that probably around the June 15th time, we'll start to see some of our basketball and volleyball programs doing some things inside the gym. Does anybody have any questions for me?
All right, thanks, Max. Let's go to Donnie.
All right. Hope everybody can hear me now.
We can hear you.
All right. Well, I'll give you an update on the armory. Uh, we've had a company come in. They've removed all the asbestos from the armory. Uh, Center Point Energy was out and removed the gas line, and that's all out. Uh, the electric meters were removed by XL Energy, but they still have to get on the pole or come out and disconnect it from the pole, and then it'll be ready to be demolished. Uh, we've also had the asbestos company out. They've done a cup, or one classroom and boiler areas and some of the construction areas. Um, it looks a little different in there. The wall between Natalie's classroom and, uh, old metal shop has been removed. Um, and in their removing, they have busted a couple water lines, and tonight, just before we left, we had to shut the water off again and have them fix another line. They pretty well flooded Natalie's classroom tonight, but they got her. Uh, the bathrooms by the high school cafeteria are totally demolished. Everything has been removed. Um, oh, they started cutting the boilers up at the elementary school and they've got, they've got a, a ways to go, but they've got a big chunk of the metal off there already. Um, the boiler room in the high school, they had to remove the ceiling because now they intend to bring a crane in and drop the boiler through the roof instead of bringing, bringing it through the building. Um, other than that, uh, rooms and most, a lot of, let's put it this way, we're ahead this year. A lot of the classrooms are done. Uh, the gym at the elementary school has been refinished already, which usually gets done in August. So we're ahead of schedule. Um, any questions? All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Donnie. All right, can we move forward then to item B, the 2020-21 school start times? Um, Ms. Humberg and Mr. Orline would like to visit some more. I know we, uh, touched on this. I believe it was one of the board meetings that had um, an early, uh, adjournment time due to some elections. So we are getting back to this, but they wanna just visit a little bit with start times for the 2020-21 school year. So with that, I will turn that over to, uh, Mary and David. Who's, who's up?
Uh, I can go first, for, started anyway. Um, yeah, so we, Mary and I have been, um, just kinda working on schedules and, and, um, looking at best ways to, uh, serve our students and our staff. And, uh, in doing that, we started looking at the length of our school day and, um, most importantly, the start, the start time. And so what we're looking at this year is, uh, starting the school day in each building, uh, 10 minutes later. And then, um, still keeping the teacher contract, the 7:45 to 3:45. Starting 10 minutes earlier, or 10 minutes later would give us an opportunity to, um, expand our professional development for staff and, uh, be able to just get more done with them in the morning. Um, I think the, having an opportunity to meet with all staff in the morning because we have, uh, coaches in both buildings and, and things going on after school, um, would, will give us an opportunity to uh, spend a little bit more time and, uh, and we can have, um, just a more meaningful amount of time together. 10 minutes doesn't sound like a lot, but uh, when it comes to, uh, working with staff and groups, it, it really can mean a lot. And, uh, we, we really are just kinda looking at going back to, um, you know, in, in the 2013-14 school year, we added 10 minutes to the day, um, for that advisory time that was at the high school. And so what we're really doing is, is going back to where we were streamlining, um, schedules at the, at the high school and at the elementary and still giving us, um, plenty of time, plenty of student contact time and, um, well above the state requirements for that. And then just expanding our opportunity to meet, uh, with staff and have, do some staff development things in the morning.
And that's what we're looking at at the elementary too. Those extra 10 minutes will allot us that time to meet with our staff to provide those professional development opportunities. You know, we, we find that our instructors do best when they are trained in the areas in which they teach and when they're given the time to learn new instructional methods. So we're kind of excited for it. At the elementary level, you're probably wondering, well, who's gonna be on the playground then with the kids? Because we've rotated our elementary staff through there, and, and the plan is that we would have, um, our career professionals covering that piece of our day so that we can have the staff meeting until that 8:10 bell. Um, and then at the end of the day, when our staff are so very busy, those 10 minutes really, um, come into play a little bit better for us in the morning. If we can just give everyone that same opportunity to meet, and if they're traveling between buildings, then they have those minutes too. So it should be a good thing.
Any, any question?
I had a question. Um, at the high school, then, would that 10 minutes come out of the first block?
Well, yeah, so we would start at 8:20 instead of 8:10. Actually, the, the schedule is gonna change, uh, next year with our connect time that we're, with the personalized learning. That'll be about 33 minutes a day. So our classes will, um, eventually be around 78 to 82 minutes. We're still kinda tweaking what that will look like. And so we'll still have the, the block system. They'll just be a little bit shorter. And then we've also, um, decreased, um, just a, a little bit of some, um, passing time, uh, during, uh, the second chance breakfast and just kinda tweaking some things that way. We're really able to make up that 10 minutes by cutting out some of the, um, you know, just by being more efficient in how we schedule.
And would the bus routes then be at the same starting time, or would they be coming 10 minutes later also?
Everything, since we're, we would do the elementary and the high school equally 10 minutes, so everything would be this, uh, 10 minutes later for buses. You know, every, everything would just be 10 minutes later.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions or discussion? I have grossly underestimated this group. I thought there would be some discussion regarding this. Um, but I've not, I'm not seeing a lot. Um, any other questions? Otherwise, we're gonna keep working on it. Um, okay. Bruce, go ahead.
I'll just make one comment. I, I guess my comment is, I think as your admin staff and, and, uh, these two principals, they're taking a lot of time and analysis of everything, and I think when their presentation is done, for me, it takes most of the questions away because they've answered it all.
Ashley?
Yeah, same. And I, when I saw it on the agenda, was thinking you were gonna go like California and push it back, you know, half an hour or an hour. And I'm like, my kids were all excited. I was excited, but if it's 10 minutes, it, it sounds like you've got all the details worked out, so, yeah.
And, and I just wanna be on the record. I, I, I'm not opposed to going California. Um, the, the problem that we have here and, and I shouldn't say that's the wrong word to use. It's not a problem. The factor that is really putting a lot of pressure onto this is we are a district that it would be really difficult for us to move to a tiered busing system. Larger districts, for instance, they will go and do a bus route, um, around the district once for elementary students. Then the buses will go back a second time and do middle school and high school. That's a tiered system. Some districts, and there's lots of research out there that, you know, teenagers, for instance, for, um, not have starting school before 9:30. There's a lot of sleep benefits for teenagers and the such. Um, so I, I certainly would, would love to come up with a system in which we could somehow accomplish that. So it's really, really tricky when you are in a single-tier bus system. Um, so I, I do acknowledge that I, I think we would have some um, high school teenagers for particularly that would benefit from starting school at 9 o'clock or 9:30. I, I think there's some unfortunate moving parts that, that make that tricky.
I have a question. Will this impact any of our partnerships, like for the CNA program? Um, what Central Ad or any other schools that we collaborate with, or is it kind of a new issue?
Yep, this, well said, Maggie. Yep, it's kind of a mute issue. It shouldn't impact them at all. Our start times for the kids remain at the elementary school basically the same. So with our shared staff, that's the example. And David, I think that speaks for you as well, correct?
Yep. Yep, and we're offering, we're offering some zero-hour classes this year, and then we've got the, the CNA program, but that won't, that won't affect any of that. I actually did a, I did a, some research on it back in February, and I looked at 21 school districts within our, within 50 miles of Painesville. Um, including two that have four-day week, and Painesville was actually, uh, had the most student contact time of all, uh, of 19 of those 21 schools with BBE and ACGC uh, having more contact time per day, but they're four days per week. So it's, it was really an interesting, interesting study into, um, start times and, and, uh, there's really a big variety of start times just within, within 50 miles of Painesville.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're gonna keep moving ahead with this. I, I think, um, the plan will be to, to go forward with implementation. Um, if someone has a question or concern or if something comes up, by all means, call, email, text, um, you can contact Mary, David, myself, and we can try and, try and answer those questions. Let's go on then to, um, item C, annual policy review. So there are three policies. Um, there's actually a list of about, uh, seven policies that require the board to look at them annually. Um, typically, uh, this year, the policy committee went through and did a review process for all of our 500-series policies. The 500-series are all policies that pertain directly to students. The one thing, when you look at the list of annual reviewed, uh, policies that require annual review, most of those are 500-series pol, series policies. Um, so rather than having, um, six or seven policies to review like we have in past years, um, all we have are three. And so these three are actually gonna be relatively, um, simple because we have been reviewing them annually, and there haven't been any changes to them. So the first one is Policy 410 Family, um, and Medical Leave. This was reviewed, um, last February of 2019. The only thing that the board needs to understand with this is there's been no changes to FMLA. And that's really important with this policy, cause what this is, is this is essentially MSBA's boilerplate policy. They have put together the boilerplate that complies with the Family and Medical Leave Act. When the Family and Medical Leave Act is amended through the legislative process, MSBA will come out with a new version that puts us in compliance with either federal or state, um, statute. The interesting thing about this is, uh, there have been no changes. The only thing that the board needs to be aware of is, um, with the, uh, COVID-19 pandemic, there have been, uh, modifications to FMLA, and there have been modifications to leave associated with COVID-19. We are in 100% compliance with those. All of those changes were pushed out to school districts in early April, and, uh, they have been posted in our lounges and everywhere where we have our leave, um, notices for our, all of our employees. All of that FMLA modifications have been, been, uh, put out there. The biggest thing for board members to understand is, you know, how has COVID affected FMLA? Right now, in the state of Minnesota, if you get COVID, the Department of Health is actually requiring a 14-day quarantine process. So the state went and, um, opened up an automatic 80 hours or two weeks' worth of, of, uh, employment. 80 hours of COVID-19 eligible FMLA if anybody were in a quarantine situation. So that's the big change that's going on right now. MSBA does not intend to have that reflect in their Policy 410 at this time, but they have, uh, worked with all school districts in order to make sure that we are in compliance with the new FMLA requirements associated with the pandemic. Um, my understanding is that that, um, 80 hours will stay in effect until, um, there is no longer a peacetime emergency in the state of Minnesota. That is what is, is driving how long this will, will be in place. So, um, Linda is the one in the district office who does most of the FMLA, um, uh, timelines. She works with employees and, and makes sure, kinda monitors to make sure if somebody is going out on leave, if it's FMLA-qualified. Um, and we really have had no issues with employees accessing FMLA or the application of FMLA at, uh, Painesville area schools. My recommendation would be to say that this policy has been reviewed by the board and that, uh, we are gonna proceed with the same, um, language that we currently have on file. Questions at all about, uh, FMLA or, uh, leave policy? Okay, then we will move on to harassment and violence. Um, again, this is another one. It, uh, was reviewed February of 2019. Uh, MSBA updated this policy in 2017. When the board reviewed this in 2019, we did incorporate those changes. Uh, so there are no recommended changes for the harassment and violence, uh, policy. Um, I am the individual who's identified as the point of, um, to make those, those, um, um, uh, claims, the, or to, to, uh, file a harassment or, or, um, violence claim against the district. Just so the board's aware, I have not received any of those in the last year. Um, if there were an influx in these or something, I would say maybe we need to sit down and look at what policy changes we could have to address those with, um, no, um, action happening within this policy. Again, I would just recommend that we, um, add it to our reviewed list in June of 2020 and keep the policy as is. Questions at all on that? Okay, the last one then is fund balance. Um, so Policy 714 dictates what our fund balance should be. The policy has 8%. Uh, we can talk about this more when we get to our budget, um, information, but if you look at the spreadsheet that is the budget, in order to figure out what the 8% look at the spreadsheet that is the budget, in order to figure out what the 8% is, or what our percentage is, you would have to take the dollar amount in cell K6, which is $1,752,076, and divide that by the dollar amount in cell E75, which is $14,276,778. That, when I do that math, comes out to about 12.2%, 12.3%. So we are obviously above our 8%. So we are in compliance with our fund balance policy. But ultimately, what the fund balance policy is identifying is it's general fund unassigned ending fund balance of the year. So line six, all the way over on the right-hand side, it's that number. That's what's technically our fund balance according to our fund balance policy. And like I said, right now, with our preliminary budget, and actually when we get to it, it's going to move a little bit, but right now, we're at about 12.3% when our policy says 8%. Questions on fund balance policy? At this time, I wouldn't recommend any changes. The auditors take a look at our fund balance policy every year. They are also comfortable with our current policy in place. Be honest with you, the ones that, the one thing auditors look at the most, yes, they want to see a district that has a fund balance policy, but they actually want to see a district that is also living by their fund balance policy. And so we are doing both, and our auditors have been very pleased with that. Questions regarding Policy 714?
For years, we didn't have a fund balance. And is the percentage that we have similar to lots of schools? Okay, that's awesome.
So a lot of times, you know, this is the first district that I've worked in that identifies a percentage. A lot of times, districts will say that they want two months of operating expenses, which for us is about $700,000 to $750,000 a month. We're right in there. But like I said, this, our fund balance policy represents a percentage, which is fine. There's multiple ways to do it, and I think it makes sense. Any other questions regarding the fund balance policy? Okay, so the board, I will just put in the minutes that the board reviewed all these policies. They're all going to stay as is. So there really will not be a need for the board to take any action on these policies. You're not going to need to do a first reading for changes and then post them and then come back and do a second reading. But the board has reviewed them, and we will note that on the policy as well. So that brings us to item D and budget. Let's talk budget a little bit. So there's a couple of things that are going to be changing this budget. First of all, the, originally, we were being told that the stimulus, the CARES money, was going to be paid out after July 1, which would mean we would be booking all the revenue and expenditures in next year. Now, my understanding is that the latest from MDE said that they were going to pay that money out on June 30. Now, I don't know if that means that's when they actually distribute the money, or if that means when they begin the process of paying out the money. But we are now working from the understanding that we will actually get that revenue in the 1920 school year. So that's going to impact a little bit of the budget when we start looking next year, because obviously, we won't be spending those dollars this year. They'll be in play for next year as far as expenditures are concerned. The district is eligible for about $95,000 worth of stimulus money. So what we are doing, and I actually have a webinar later this week, that I will be watching to be able to identify exactly what's eligible, but things off the top of my mind that we can go back and look at using some of these funds for. Anything that was community ed that was fee-for-service, that we continued during distance learning, those type of things that we could not collect any fees for, but we continued to provide the service, those would be eligible for these dollars to be able to help us cover those expenses. Any technology needs or upgrades that were needed because of distance learning, we did need some additional hotspots. Those are also eligible expenses. Any additional transportation or expenses associated with meal distribution. We had a need for, obviously, more coolers and the ability to pack meals and send them out on buses, so we had some equipment expenses. Those type of expenses will be eligible for these dollars as well. I have been very consistent with Matt about that the stimulus money was going to be able to help community ed kind of weather this shutdown storm. And that's going to continue to happen. There, you're going to see that there's going to be a transfer from Fund 1 to Fund 4. Fund 1 is general fund, Fund 4 is community services. I'm not knowing for sure if it's going to be a dollar-for-dollar type exchange, but I'm hoping that we can support community ed with as much assistance as we can. The other piece that is a moving target too is this year, and David, correct me when I misspeak on this title stuff. This year was the first year in a while that the district qualified for $10,000 of Title IV money. Title IV, I saw Mary hold a four up.
Second year. We did last year for the first time.
1920, right?
Yep.
Yep. So for 2021, we are going to qualify for Title IV money again. So that $10,000 isn't in the budget either, and that will be, will directly impact our general unassigned number. So that will impact that number as well. So when this all shakes out, I think everything outside of the general fund is probably going to look very similar. When this all shakes out with the general fund, I think what we're looking at is probably a budget that's going to be in that neighborhood of, rather than $57,593 in deficit, you're probably going to be somewhere around $20,000 to $30,000 in deficit is where it's going to end up. Now, all of that is preliminary. You know, if we end up with enrollment like we did last summer, that could, will definitely impact this. We did just get an email that we have a new family that's enrolling two elementary students, school students for next year. So we have some more enrollment coming in. The one thing that I guess I really want the state to iron out is what does September look like? I think our students want to know that. I think our families want to know that. I know that our schools want to know that. But I'm really going to push to try and get the state to move on that. They did send a communication out that indicated they would let schools know by July 27 of 2020 what the plan is for fall. To me, that's simply a month late. We can't wait until almost August 1 to figure out what fall is going to look like. So I'm not hearing a lot of conversation about families withdrawing their kids from school and homeschooling, but I also am hearing families increasingly want to know what is school going to look like in the fall. You know, when Max and Matt are talking about summer programming and what we can and can't do, the thing and kind of the belief that we've implemented here is students need to have some semblance of normalcy. We need to get students back interacting in some way. It needs to be safe. It needs to be healthy. But we need to be able to figure out what that balance is, and a big part of that balance is school. And so as much, we are going to push the envelope of being able to open as much as we possibly can and do so safely following CDC and Department of Health guidelines. So that's the one unknown, you know, where that ends up. Obviously, enrollment directly impacts revenue, and likewise, enrollment directly impacts expenditures. So questions on the budget?
I just have a question, comment. Do you sense that they're feeling pressure from higher-ed institutions as they're making their decisions, you know, to bring students back to campus, yet there's such a delay with K-12? Because I, have you heard what part of the equation is? Is there any sort of, like, push of other places already making these decisions? And there are reasons I think faculty know, I mean, there's planning, all those things on why those decisions are being made, I guess.
Yeah, I think, I think you're absolutely right. The more those higher-ed institutions are making the decisions they are, it is going to apply greater pressure, and it makes it very difficult to explain the rationale for having K-12 schools potentially in a distance model and higher-ed institutions in an in-person model. I think that's hard for people to wrap their head around. At the same time, I'm not getting the impression right now that the State Department feels like they are getting pressured to the point where they need to rush their guidance or get more information out. But I think everyone's just in the shutdown mode of distance learning. I think everyone's kind of decompressing right now and trying to just do summer. And I think you give it a week or two, or you know, get into July, and I think it's going to be a different level of urgency that's going to be associated with it. You know, I don't know as far as board members, if there's anything that you guys get from MSBA, or from, if you're talking with Representative Demuth, or Senator Howe, or anybody in that realm, if you cannot just continue to hammer that we need to know by July 1 what the plan is for school in the fall. And I understand that the best-laid plan can go haywire, and there may need to be a bunch of contingencies associated with it, but we need to know by the 1st of July where it is, what we're doing, and how we're going to go about this. I do not believe it's in anyone's best interest to wait until almost the end of July or the beginning of August to get this information out to people. It's not helpful in any way. So if any of you are engaged in those conversations, or you're in those circles, and people are asking, please stress, July 1 should be the latest that public schools know which direction they're going. The other thing, any other questions with the budget? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I really think the budget is kind of where it's at right now. You know, we've talked about this for now, the last two or three meetings, and I think people have a good grasp of where things are at. So we're really going to start moving ahead with making solid plans now for summer projects. We're going to get people booked up and get things on the schedule so we can get work completed in satisfactory timelines and everything. So just know that those are going to move to more solid plans than originally, we were kind of getting ourselves penciled into contractor schedules and stuff. We're going to get those solidified in the near future. Anything else with budget? Okay. So let's go to E and talk about strategic planning. Well, I will be the first to admit that I was thinking by this time, we would be able to have strategic planning community sessions. Clearly, that is not happening, although maybe we could do strategic planning at the baseball field. Or maybe we could do strategic planning at the football field. I didn't think of that. I should, we should think that one through. Huh. So the question, I guess, here's kind of what I'm, in my mind, how this is working. So we have our, our community input, we have employee input, and then we have our data. And that whole data realm is really kind of what I see as like the student input, that that data speaks to student needs. And so you put those three circles together in a Venn diagram, and it's kind of all that stuff that overlaps. That's really what a strategic plan should really focus on. I mean, that's where those, those areas all kind of get that synergy. So my question with this is, what is the board's wish or desire? How do you, number one, what is it, what level of community input is the board looking for from strategic planning? I think that's a big one that if you guys could give me some direction, that would help me.
So from my perspective, last time we did the strategic plan, we did some community input. But it was, again, one of those meetings, no COVID, but not very many people showed up. My thought right now is that's still an extremely important factor. But one of the things we have, in my perspective, when we get the kids back to school, having that kind of stuff taking place around that time in those formats may just be reasonable, that people know that the school then is available for that stuff. Maybe we have it in a gymnasium or something. But my thought is to, I don't believe in kicking the can down the road, but we've kind of been operating with a, well, as long as I've been on the board, this has been something that seems never to have been relevant. But maybe kick the can down the road just a little bit, get the kids back in school, or however it's going to work out, and maybe we entertain it in the fall. That's my thought. Go ahead, everybody.
I think it's important that we have community feedback. We've been really clear that we will be transparent, open. And I think as down the road, we're going to have to have operating referendum, that we're going to want to have buy-in from our community members. And so I would not recommend the road be moved forward without that. I think we could be creative, kind of like what you were saying, is it a football field, a baseball field? What are the different channels and mediums that we can, can do some of this work? You know, there can be Zoom meetings, you can break out into rooms. There's different, I think there's just different options. I would just hate to see us create a strategic plan when we've been working so hard to involve our community and then to not provide the opportunity. And then if those opportunities are there and people choose not to show up, that's kind of on them. But I think it's up to us to create those opportunities at least. So timing and place and all those things, I'm not certain. But I would hate to see the decision that minimize it to move forward. That's just my, my thought.
Say, Matt, do you have an objective, a goal of, like, I guess your thoughts on when you'd like to kind of have this thing rolling by? I mean, as Bruce said, you know, is there a better option to kind of see what this fall brings and what kind of community involvement we can bring then?
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's the kind of million-dollar question. So here's kind of what we're hanging up on. So all of our teachers have professional growth plans. One of the things we're really trying to work on is, is creating really relevant professional development for our teachers. And in order for that to happen, the structures that I'm used to is, the district has a strategic plan in place that has two to three to four very strategic goals that really set the direction the district is moving. And then from there, then it's easy for community ed to develop a plan for community ed that supports that strategic plan. It's easy for teachers to look at their professional growth goal and develop professional growth goals that support the district strategic plan. And so that's, to me, where the void is right now. I mean, these, we've been working hard with teachers on modifying professional growth plans a little bit. I think they're getting better, they're higher quality. But I think what we really need is, we ultimately need that roadmap, that is the district strategic plan, because the district strategic plan then really becomes applied to all decisions in the district. When we have admin meeting, it's really the strategic plan that we're working with. When we're talking about curriculum development, how does that support our strategic plan? We're talking about teacher development, how does that support our strategic plan? So do I, would I have a problem, or could I see some value in doing it in the fall? I could see that. I could see that. I think it's a natural time when people are getting back in the buildings. I could see a, a good amount of participation, particularly from our parents. I definitely don't want it to go into next winter. I mean, I, I would love to have a strategic plan ready to go by September 1st. I could certainly live with a strategic plan ready to go by October 1st. Beyond that, I think it, it's more important than, than putting it out any further.
Uh, I said, sorry, I said from day one that I think, I think schools should be community driven. But having said that, I don't think it's, I don't think we're losing transparency by making these decisions as a, I think that's what the board is for, is really to help drive that from the community input that we get. Anyway, that's the whole point of having an elected board is that we are part of the community and part of the school and we have input to give. I don't say we shouldn't get community input. We definitely, I mean, community input's really important. But like Bruce said, how many people show up at those things and then it's other people that complain about decisions that are made later. You know what I mean? So giving people some sort of, you know, option to give input would be great. But like, like Matt said, I mean, everybody needs this because who are we at our core and, you know, what's, what's our overall objective? And how does everything relate to that? And we need to know that. It needs to be down and we need to make sure we've got it, you know, straightened out sooner than later. And, and things, like if we're waiting for things to go back to normal, that's not going to happen for a long time if there is, if it's going to happen. And we, I mean, it kind of bites to have to go with the flow constantly and like change up the gym space and change up this and do all, you know, things on the fly, but that might be the new normal. So if we're going to wait for things to go back to boring, then it might be a long wait.
Another thought. So listening to Matt talking about how we need to have something in place for staff development and other things. What I've noticed on these is it seems like a fair amount driven from the system. What if, sometimes when you have a planning meeting, you get there and then you're asking people to, you suggest and they have a moment to think about it. And so I don't know necessarily that you always draw out the information you like. What if we put together what we thought we should have? And then get it to the public before we adopt it as a board? So they would get a complete option of what we're thinking we need to do as a, as a plan. Information accordingly. Using the data from the staff who obviously have to be involved, within admin that obviously has to be involved. But open it up so people have an actual document with data when they come to that meeting. And we could have a meeting somewhere along the way, but we're not going to hold anything up either. Just, just suggesting. Go ahead, anybody.
And can I say too, really quick, that, you know, studies show that brainstorming sessions are actually really terrible ways to get ideas. Because you have dominant personalities that are going to throw it out there and other people don't even bother coming up with ideas. So maybe like you say, Bruce, something that gives the ideas or, you know, states kind of the direction and then somewhere for people to fill in their own. You know, I see this as being important and go with that, but just having a big group of people there to brainstorm, I don't know. I, I don't know that that's the most efficient use of time and energy, in my opinion.
I do like that.
That, that.
Go ahead, Thomas.
I'd say I'd, I'd be like that agree, idea. Just thinking out loud, as Ashley mentioned, we, we go through the concept of, of putting together what we know, you know, could be, should be adopted and then putting that out to the public for general overview ahead of a meeting so that we could have some feedback off that. It shortens up that timeline of what we have to post meeting.
Maggie?
I was just going to say, I don't imagine, I hope we would never do a big group think brainstorm. I think oftentimes like strategic planning, you're done, you're doing it so that people are individually answering questions and then you're bringing it to a larger group to have discussions. I think Ashley for exactly the reasons, you don't want to have people over dominate or people not feel free to voice their opinion. I don't, I don't feel that this is like, kind of like one way or the other. I think we can have a blend of both. You know, it doesn't have to be, we, we don't have time, so we're not going to have community, community input. Our original intent was, you know, we talked about it and there was a reason why we wanted community input. And now that's shifting, which I understand is because of the challenging environment we're in. But then what was the value we went back from the first place of really talking about that this was really important? And so I, I think that's just something I, I want to really be thoughtful of if we say, you know, we really don't need community input. Not that we're saying we don't need, but to what extent? I just think long-term, you know, typically you want buy-in and that can be done multiple ways, kind of like what Thomason, you know, that you were saying is do we come up with our own kind of plan based off of maybe teacher administration feedback and then have something to bounce off of? But I just caution that we move forward in isolation because of the circumstances. I think we are creative, we're innovative, we're, you know, that's what we teach our students to be, that we can find ways, solutions to get feedback, whatever that format may look like. But I just, that's my caution. I don't want us to be like, because of the situation, change what we originally, what the intent was.
Rick?
Okay, just one of the questions I would have be the philosophy behind getting community input. Are we trying to say we want the whole community to feel like they've had input? Or do we simply want to be able to go back to the community and say, we have received community input? You know, are we trying to open the door to everyone or are we just trying to get some feedback, which could be done in a smaller way? Even, even if each school board member had three people to call and with a list of questions to talk to individually or however we would do it. So I guess that's the question. Do we want to, are we afraid that, that people are going to perceive that they haven't had any input? Or as Bruce said, if we give people the chance, we'd probably get more people if we went out and talked to people rather than try to ask people to come in and talk to us. So that's just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think regardless of how, I mean, to, to answer your question, Rick, I, I think it's important to have a structure in place for the community to be able to provide feedback. Now, does that feedback necessarily always align with what our data is telling us and what our data is identifying as needs? Not necessarily, and sometimes decisions are made that don't necessarily always go along with that feedback. However, I do think whatever level of community input we are going to solicit, I believe the, the number one thing we need to do is personally get people invited. I think all board members should be committed and you could go home and start brainstorming right now, a list of 20 community members that you would feel comfortable having a conversation with to invite them into some sort of a strategic planning session. The one thing that prior to the whole COVID issue is I did send a letter, a personal invite to all of our Chamber of Commerce members. And since those have been canceled, I have received probably in excess of a half dozen inquiries about when are those going to be rescheduled? We would really like to be able to participate in something like that. So I do think there's a desire out there. And I think far, we will get far more participation if we take the time to extend a personal invitation versus just putting an advertisement in the newspaper, sending out a mass email or something along those lines that says, strategic planning session on Tuesday night at 6:00 PM. So yeah, I, I, I don't know that I necessarily answered the whole question, Rick, but I, I think there needs to be a portion of it. But I agree wholeheartedly, if board members are willing to just be the ones to carry the message and to personally invite people, I think we could get a really good representation of our community to be able to provide some input. Other thoughts, other things people are thinking?
I really think we need to get the community involved just because of the transparency thing. And there are a lot of people in our community that are really invested in our school. It's a wonderful thing and I, I want to encourage it. It's, it's a great thing to have them so invested that they want to participate in all of these things and all of these decisions, even though we make the final decisions, don't get me wrong. But I like to hear what the input is and hear where they're at. And if for some, if you need me for some reason to make a bunch of phone calls or go out and talk to people, I'm more than willing. I'm sure most of our board members would be.
So, last time we did this, we followed that process. We had met with everybody. We had lots of people involved. We had public input. And a few of you might remember that, remember that. And we ended up with a strategic plan that when we hired this new superintendent, he didn't really know what we did. So when I think about our conversation here, we do have, we never asked anybody after it was totally put together. I'm not sure it closes the doors or doesn't keep us open. If we put together what we think we need based upon what we feel, we're talking to the public, all of us, administration feels, the instructor feels, and then give people back a document that is close enough to something we select rather than putting it together. And I'm going to tell you honestly, when we did it, it was just like as we got all the information put together and that were very pointed things we were supposed to address, right? Well, if you keep putting water on this thing, pretty much you get it watered down, so it becomes relatively meaningless. It was what we ended up with as a thought. But I don't remember that we ever went back to anybody with that final document and asked the public about it. Because at the end of the day, all the planning in the world is great. I think we need input from everybody, but if they don't see what actually ends up in that document other than watching a meeting like this, I, I still look at this and when I go to meetings, if, if it is not relatively well structured on exactly where we're going and you can't see how it actually formulates into a final product, give me a tentative final product instead that I can read to see if that meets the needs and be able to analyze that. We just don't close the door on the public looking at more of a completed document rather than starting from nowhere land and trying to create something.
Go ahead. Do board members have a chance to look at that profile of a graduate survey that SacRapidRice did? That was sent to me by Michelle Schmitz. I actually have tinkered around with the idea because to me, that type of a survey tool would be invaluable information to gather from our community. That type of a survey, that's a, that's a, a final product for a school system. I mean, if we could get our community to, to come to consensus and really solidify five or six attributes that they feel should be the foundation of our graduate, to me, that's the quality community input that we're looking for. From there, once you have those five or six attributes, then I think it's, you know, educators, it's board members, it's a variety of other people that can go and put the plan together with goals and short-term benchmarks as to what is our roadmap look like to create a final product that has these attributes at their core? And to me, as, you know, when I step away from the system and try and look as a community member, that's a piece that I feel like I would have a really quality voice in. Is these are the attributes that I hold dear as a member of this community. So think about that a little bit, but, but that's kind of how, where my mind went. And then if, if we could somehow get some consensus on, on what those attributes are that our community is looking for in a graduate, I think that would be valuable information. It would play nicely then with helping the district sift through data to identify needs. It would be, work very, very efficiently with talking about whether it be academic or social emotional goals and, and things like that. I, I think there, there may be a, a play with that profile of graduate work.
I personally am totally in on a survey. I, I don't have any trouble with that at all. That makes a lot of sense. That one that you're speaking of, they did that probably six or seven years ago. And I, I read how they did it then. It was wonderful. And I think we might even been looking at ours. But we went through a period of time where the district wasn't that interested in surveying. But I just remember us getting a survey done, having to do with what's going on outside. And honestly, the survey gave us a ton of direction on what direction to go. So I'm totally in on a survey, almost no matter how you do it, just so we get it to everybody. And they told us how they wanted stuff to deliver to, to them. Yep. I think that's a really good idea.
Other questions or concerns? The conversation's been very beneficial. So I've, I've been taking notes and I am, am getting a lot out of this. So. Other thoughts?
I would just say one more thing. One more comment is that, you know, as long as you're clear with the public about the intention of whether it's the survey conversation and what the outcome is, you're fine. I don't think the intention would ever be, we're going to listen to only what the community says and implement that. But you're clear about what the intention is, then you don't run into the issue of, well, we said these things and you're not doing it. We are gathering input and that's only part of the equation to the decision-making. So I'm not too afraid of the community being upset, you know, with, with what we decide because this is gathering information and feedback, not, you know, a stamp of this is what we're going to do. So I'm open to, however we do it, I just like the gathering of information.
Okay. Well, tomorrow we have admin meeting and this is going to be the focus of admin meeting. So we'll have something that I think we can, can put a timeline together and, and get ready to move on. So thank you for the, the conversation. It is, it is helpful. Can we move on to summer food program? I just wanted, this is just purely informational for the board. We are moving forward with continuing our summer, with continuing meals in the satellite distribution mode like we did for distance learning. After a lot of thought and, and consideration and, and gathering some feedback from people that were using the service during the school year, we decided to keep the locations open that were open during the school year. Originally, we were thinking we might need to, to pare them down a little bit in order to get them to fit into something that we think is manageable. But, you know, we, we've got it, it running. This is the first week and I know we're, we're serving about 500 meals or so, a little over between five and 600 meals a day. So that's a good news. But if, were there any questions regarding summer meals? Just so board members know, there's no residency required to this. So if they're 18 years of age and younger, they can come to any of our satellite locations and get a breakfast and a lunch free of charge. It has nothing to do with free and reduced meal benefits or anything like that. It's open to everybody. They don't have to be enrolled at Painesville area schools. They just need to be, the meals are just free for those that are 18 years of age and younger. So it's been in the paper. I think it's going to continue to be in the paper, but just know that it's out there and if you get questions, encourage people to, to use that. And if they want or have questions, they can always call either school office and, and we can try and help them out if, if they have questions. Big kudos to our food staff. We have 11 food service workers, 10 of them, when they found out that we were looking at exploring, we want to do this in the summer, 10 of them said that they would be more than happy to work some hours in the summer in order to keep the program going. So huge kudos to them. They have been awesome in transitioning from having very defined serving times and when kids are in the cafeteria and when they have to have their food ready and all that to a very chaotic, um, system where they are literally trying as best they can to make a good, um, guess as to how many meals they needed. And when somebody came back and said, we ran out of food at this location, they quickly put together more food and had it to whoever was going to get in a van and run it out to homes. You can't do something like this unless people are willing to be flexible and to just, um, meet the, the needs where things are at. So our food service people have been beyond tremendous. They have really stepped up in this and, and I can't, you know, thank them enough for, for being able to do that. We'll continue all the way through the summer. I think the only plan is there will be one week. And I'm not looking at calendar, but it'll be the, the very last days of August. It's like August 28th or 29th through September 3rd. Those are the only days that our kitchen will close. So we'll do a one week where we won't have anything happening in our kitchen. So they can get things cleaned up and turned over for the new school year and ready for kids for the Tuesday after Labor Day. But otherwise our kitchens will be running, um, pretty much every day. They are going to have a three-day weekend at the 4th of July. I can't remember if it's July 3rd or July 5th, one of those days is, is going to be a, a closed kitchen day too. So, um, if you see any of the kitchen folks, uh, thank them. They have, have done tremendous work and, and I know that there's a lot of families that are really appreciative of being able to come and pick up, uh, breakfast and lunch at school or at any of the satellites. Questions at all with the summer, um, program? We did talk a little bit. I mentioned that maybe one of the goals could be is could we do this enough and serve enough meals where we would have enough, uh, food service funds to be able to have free breakfast in both of our schools for all kids? I don't think the numbers are going to be there, but I'm not giving up on the idea of free breakfast. There's got to be other ways. I know other schools are doing it. And so there's other ways to do it. We, I think we need to keep that door open and, and be willing to listen to some other ideas on that too and, and see if we can come up with a, a plan for that. But just know that I don't believe there'll be the revenue generated from summer, um, meal service to be able to pull, pull that off, which was a hope, but, um, I just don't see the numbers working out. Questions at all? That gets us to the last.
Last on the list, does anybody have anything they want us to, to look at, um, information at? Say, uh, two meetings for now for a meeting like this? Any information that we'd like to talk about as, uh, a board that we are missing maybe?
My only, my only comment would be is Matt, is there any way we can get, uh, creative or what's it looking like for being able to get back into a, a room together?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up, Thomas. I, I, I meant to, to actually talk about that earlier. I'm shooting for July. So the June business meeting is going to be like this again, but I am hoping that come July 1, we are going to be able to, to get back together. The, the issue isn't necessarily getting the board together to meet in a room. The issue is the, the unpredictableness of, it's an open public meeting and who else is coming? And we really can't ask people to our SVP. And so it's hard for us to put board members, myself and Linda, our student reps, and then like tonight, we have 16 people on this call. That wouldn't meet CDC or MDH guidelines right now with, with social distancing in where we're currently at. I believe come July 1, I'm hoping that there'll be some flexibility with that. As soon as we can get back in a boardroom, we will be back in a boardroom.
Yeah, make it boardroom, gymnasium, whatever it takes.
Yeah, and I agree. I think, uh, it's, yeah, I, I hear you and I'm, I'm with you. Anybody else?
I just have a random question. Are we doing any time lapse, um, photos of the additions so that we can share those efforts all completed?
Yeah, so the, um, you guys did get the weekly update I mailed out on Monday morning. All of those, those photos are going to be in one collected space. Now, uh, everything that'll be on those will be still photos. I'm hoping to randomly from time to time, get some video clips as well. But right now, all of those still photos are going to be in a collection that we will be able to, um, to use, really however we would want to use them.
I, I've been taking some photos so I can add them to yours.
Sounds good, Donnie.
Yeah, and if, if anyone takes photos that, um, that I can send out to, uh, families and, and uh, staff during the summer too, I'm going to continue to do updates and, and, uh, I've taken some photos also. But if you have some that you want to send to me, I'd be happy to share those with, uh, with parents.
David, I will include you on the, that weekly, um, update from UNESCO. Then you will just have all of the UNESCO photos from the week.
Okay, that sounds good.
Cheryl, did you have something?
Yes, I had a question. Um, of course the EMPA banquet did not happen this year and the board usually gives out longevity awards. I have all of the, um, paperwork and everything here to do that. Should I put those in the teachers' mailboxes, the employees' mailboxes? Should I mail them out? Should I not do them at all and wait?
Cheryl, what would you think about maybe incorporating something like that back for our back to school, um, workshop?
I'm, but I just want some input I should do.
I think that would be a neat thing to do when we get, when we have staff right away that first morning.
Great way to celebrate, absolutely.
Okay, I can do that. I'll have them ready.
Yeah, we'll, we'll slot some time into that agenda and stuff and, and then, uh, we can, we can go from there. But I think that'd be the best place to do it and there's a group and those that are, have been here for 20 years or 25 years can get recognized by their peers and stuff.
Great, great idea. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, I would say that we are done.
You're done.